So this is the meeting of the Northampton Zoning Board of Appeals. And I'm David Bloomberg and joining me as board members today are Elizabeth Silver. And do we still have Maureen on the on the call?
Yes.
And then Nathan Chung is here from the City of Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability, providing staff support to our board. This hearing is being recorded, as you heard, and notice of this hearing was published on October 26 and November 2, 2023. Before we hear the application for the special permit for 122 Main Street, we do provide an opportunity for public comment for members of the public who want to address the board about matters that are not on tonight's agenda. But I believe we have confirmed that there are no other members of the public present, correct, Nathan?
That is correct. No one else is on the on the hearing.
So seeing no other members of the public present, we'll move on to the matter that is on the agenda for tonight. I should disclose it's not a conflict issue, but I am a big fan of Pinocchio Pizza. But if but if available if if that were a reason to recuse, I don't have any financial interest or expectation of financial interest. So I don't think it's an actual conflict. The the application is for a special permit by Erica Saravia to install awning signs where the total area of all the front surface signs exceed 10% of the ground floor facade area at 122 Main Street MAP ID 32C-009. For this special permit, a super majority, meaning a unanimous vote of all three members tonight, is required to approve the application for the special permit. It's discretionary and as part of such any such approval, the board must find that, quote, "The architecture of the building, the location of the building, or the land or nature of the use being made of the building or land is such that additional signs or signs of a larger size would not detract from the character of the neighborhood and should be permitted in the public interest." Applicable code sections is 350-72M. So with that, we always give the applicant the first the opportunity to present a brief description of the request that you're making. And if anyone who addresses the board, well, in this case, the applicant could just give your name and address first for the record that's being kept. And then if you could just tell us briefly, we do have your application, but if you could just tell us briefly what, you know, why we're here, what's your requesting, please?
My name is Erica Saravia. My location address is 122 Main Street, Norhanto, Massachusetts, 01060. And we are here because we have a sign already, but it's too big. We want to make it smaller than the side that we have.
Okay, you want to make it smaller or you'd like us to grant approval so you could keep the sign?
No, because there's already, there's one already. But they want to make it a little bit smaller than the one that is installed already.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think, David, you could clarify that it might not be necessary depending on, you know, what we discussed tonight, right?
Right.
I think perhaps Nathan could offer us some clarification on where we stand, like what is too large? Is there already an existing sign that's too large?
Yes, got to look at the dimensions again. So the existing sign is well in excess of the 10% of the ground floor facade. The applicant and applicant sign maker, GAG Signs, they presented a new design. It's quite different. I believe you saw it on the staff report. And if the board wishes, I can share a screenshot if that's the board wish. So it is a different sign, and this one is within the 10% of the ground floor facade. What makes this to require a special permit is that, so the interesting thing about the sign ordinance for the business district is that the combined total of all signs on the building needs to be within 10% of the ground floor facade. There is an existing sign on the second floor salon. You know, that's well in excess of the 10% of the ground floor facade. So no matter what size the applicant presents today, even if it's within the 10% of the ground floor facade, the total is going to be well over the 10% maximum of the ground floor facade.
Right. And so the issue, well, what's before us today then is a request to approve the new sign. And if and the new sign is actually below the 10%, but the problem is there's the preexisting sign up on the second floor for the salon, which is the big metal sign. And the metal sign combined with the new sign, even though the new sign is under 10%, still requires a special permit from us, a determination of that. Okay.
As I understand it, Nathan, there are other storefronts in the same location that that do exceed based on the upper and lower and that with the distance between the two signs that there that the that there's no problem, staff problem with the request. Is that is that accurate?
That's my Yes, that's the recommendation. If you're looking at the Pinocchio Pizza directly, on the on the left side, there are three buildings and adjacent buildings, and two of them at least have, you know, two signs on the first and second floors. And I did only a visual estimation, but their dimensions are also seem well above the 10% of the ground floor facade. So considering context, the applicant's proposed sign would not be much different in size from the existing signs on the two other buildings.
So I have one question and one observation. The question is, and it could be that I just didn't read everything carefully enough, but about the awning, the side signage on the awning, like, how does that factor in? And the other, the observation is that the second floor sign is actually above the second floor. It's like where a third floor will be. So it's well above, you know, it's almost like a third floor where it's placed. So it clears that kind of frontage quite a bit, which I think is a, you know, plus in terms of not oversaturating that storefront with signage.
Right. I think that I agree, and I think that probably goes more than in my mind to the decision that we need to make, taking all of that into account as to whether this is, you know, looking for the exact language, but adversely affects the character of the yeah, would not detract from the character of the neighborhood, taking into account the fact that the new sign would otherwise be a, you know, a correct size. And to your point, Maureen, the old sign is way up at the top. You don't, I agree. I mean, I went, I went in front of the building today and looked at that whole row of buildings. And I personally don't think that, especially with the new smaller sign, it would detract from the character of the neighborhood. I am curious. I have a question for the applicant. Is the sign, is the company that made the sign for you? So they're the ones who made the awning that's up now and didn't realize that was too big?
No, that was another company that they did. But we were trying to call to fix it, and they never answered the phone call. So we find a new company, the one that is making the new design right now.
Wow, that's really unfortunate because that means you you need to pay for a new sign. I thought maybe if it's the same company, they would, they would give you a break on that.
And back to my question about the side signs on the awning.
Well, there's side signs on the existing awning. Are there side signs on the new one?
No.
Yeah. So there won't be any side signs on the new?
No, there won't, just on the front.
The new one that we're being asked to approve.
And yeah, I communicated with the applicant and the sign maker about that because their submitted design only had the front design you have seen that says Pinocchio Pizza. And they have verbally clarified that they are not planning on any side signs. And I believe the applicant just stated that again. And I have explained them the option, a buy right option for awnings. You can have four inch tall signs on the bottom edge of the awning. Either both sides, both the both sides of the awning bottoms can have four inch tall signs or the front awning can have it, which which will be visually awkward. So they still have the buy right option of adding some four inch tall side signs on the sides of the awning. But they did not propose any additional larger awning signs in their new design.
Okay.
So if we wanted to be generous in our decision, we could allow for that as well. So if the applicant decided at a later time to do that, we could encompass an approval with allowing for that. Is that, would that be possible?
I think, don't we have to approve the sign that's before us? Because our approval has to be specific to, you know, has to be specific as to.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm sure you're right about that, David. Okay, I take it back.
Yeah, I'm not sure that.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out some way of allowing it, but that's fine. You're right.
Any other questions from board members?
No, I'm I'm satisfied with Nathan's presentation and the applicant's information that we have.
And then Nathan, I was trying to understand in the staff memo, the recommendation, staff condition recommendation, surface area of the front wall should be 12.45 feet, square feet or smaller. There shall be only one front sign. So that those that those are the conditions that the staff is recommending?
Yes, 12.45 is 10% of the facade as presented and measured and presented by the applicant. So the applicant's application said the facade is 124 point, 124.5 square feet. There's simply 10%. And I said, there shall be, I mean, the, you know, typically. So in previous cases, the applicant had a couple of different shapes and logos on the front, which could be interpreted to mean multiple signs on the front. So to stay with the typical requirement, you know, that that was reason for the recommendation to have one, one shape. I mean, it can be composed of multiple text and logos, but they need to be grouped together to form like a one continuous sign. It can't be like one sign on, you know, if you don't want it to be defined as interpreting multiple sign, you can have like a one big sign on left side and one separate sign on the right side. That was the rationale.
But the but 350 7.2 M two that you cited says the board needs to specify, quote, "In the permit, the exact sign permitted, the sign and location of the signer signs, and if applicable, other restrictions." So aren't we allowing the sign in the form that's been presented in the application? I mean, we can still say no more than 12.45 square feet and no one with and only one sign. But don't we also have to say we're approving the sign, the exact sign as proposed in the application?
So I discussed this with my director and her explanation was that changing the content, once you grant the applicant the special permit, these conditions, the area, changing the content and even the, you know, the width and height, the dimension of the sign will be allowed by right, you know, typical sign application. So it is my understanding that we we can approve in a way to just specify the dimensions required without specifying that it needs to be this exact sign presented as long as it's within the within the required dimension.
It's interesting. In the permit, we have to specify the exact sign permitted and the size and location of the sign. But go ahead, Elizabeth. I cut.
I might have been, I might have been the one bumping in there. The applicant submitted two sign designs. One was the first choice, one was the second choice. And I would like to think that if either of their choices fell within the size parameters, they would have liberty to choose which of those two designs they could move forward with.
Right. And I think, yeah, I was trying to bump it before, but then after the last thing you said, David, it made me just stop and think for a second. But I also would like to be able to grant permission up to the size that they're allowed. And I mean, I can't imagine that. And maybe Erica, you can address this, but I can't imagine that if you're allowed a little bit more room than you actually asked for, that the design is going to change significantly or you're going to do something to the sign that would be objectionable. Well, I mean, pizza's pizza, right? So so I guess I just, I also would, like Maureen, prefer to give it an outside parameter of size.
Okay.
But I understand your concern, David, and I and I agree that this is what's being presented to us. And so, I mean, maybe what we could do is approve, Nathan.
Yeah, I understand now Dave's concern. Yeah, I think I sort of misspoke. So, I mean, what I'm trying to, what I was trying to explain is, you know, so yes, looking at the ordinance, you, you, you know, the special permit for this exact sign proposed. But then the typical way the city interpret this is later on, if the applicant wishes to update the sign content while staying within the area, it would be a buy right modification. And the board can specify so that it doesn't require another special permit application like this one. But yes, we, to be safe and to be in harmony with the ordinance, you do want to approve this exact sign. And Maureen, about the second sign option, I mean, I discussed it with the applicants and the sign maker and also with the director. The typical recommendation is the applicant needs to pick one particular sign and present it to the board. And I have asked, and Erica has picked this one as the one main one they want to present. And the other thing is, the second option is well above 10%. I forgot the exact percentage, but the one presented currently as the main one that just says Pinocchio Pizza, it's within 10% of the facade. The other one is well above the 10%.
So we need to focus on the first choice sign, the so-called first. Got it. Which apparently is the, Erica, that is your first choice. That's why.
Yeah, that was the first one, yeah.
Okay, good. So I think, I think we do have to specify that we're approving the so-called first choice design. The other one is maybe apparently too big too. So, okay.
All right, that sounds good. Should we close the public hearing?
Sure. Should we have a motion? Is that a motion?
Sure.
We just want to note that there's nobody else in the public room.
We give the public an opportunity to comment, and we note for the record that there are no other members of the public present to comment.
And there are no other comments, Nathan, any from anywhere else, DPW, anything?
No, well, you know, so like other signs, the applicant also needs to apply for a blocking and awning permit. I communicated that with the applicant earlier, but reminding the applicant again. And that doesn't require a hearing. It's a standard application. And I have also communicated with DPW about this hearing and, you know, that the need for the applicant to communicate with DPW about getting the awning and blocking permit. I haven't heard any response from them.
And you have, and there you've received no, Nathan, no other comments from the public or emails or letters or correspondence or phone calls about this application?
Oh, thank you. Yes, zero, zero comments, no emails, no phone calls, nothing, zero comments.
Okay, good. Okay.
Okay, that was my motion then to close the public hearing unless Erica, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, there is nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, motion to close public hearing?
A sec, wait a sec. Okay, and then we need a roll call, vote on closing?
Yes, David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, and now maybe we can have a motion on the application for the special permit?
I don't have it up in front of me, Maureen. Do you? Could you make the motion?
I don't know if I do either.
Okay, well, let me go back and
And you can just adopt what I'm saying.
Okay, go for it, David. I could find it.
So I assume it would be a motion to grant the special permit by requested by Erica Saravia to install awning signs where the total area of all surface signs, well, I just, just at 122 Main Street. And just find that language. Subject to the conditions that the surface area of the front wall or awning sign shall be 12.45 square feet or smaller, comma, there shall be only one front sign, comma, and and the the exact sign we're approving would be so-called choice number one, the one that just says, as submitted, that just says Pinocchio Pizza on it.
And so I am happy to make that motion. Is it fine, Nathan, for you to just capture that wording?
Yes. Yeah, because you mostly read from the condition. And one thing just for record, I want to make sure. And so my director and I had some disagreement. She didn't think it was necessary for the board to state it. But just for safety, do you want to state that later modifications of the sign staying within the condition does not require a special permit?
Can you explain that a little bit more?
So the way ordinance, the special permit ordinance 7.2M three is written, it says, "Any change in said signs requires a new or revised special permit unless the special permit specifies what types of changes are allowed." Tradition has been that it's kind of implied in different decisions in the past. But I think I have some, some, some thoughts where there, you know, some thoughts about maybe the board needs to specify explicitly state that just to be safe. And the board, of course, can disagree if it's reused to these types of approvals.
And you said Carolyn Mish, what was her position on this call?
Her position was that the building and planning department always interprets those types of changes while staying within the condition to be allowed by right. So I actually, in my earlier draft of the recommendation report, I didn't, I actually said, I specifically said, "Any modification while staying within the condition does not require another new special permit." And I think there were some disagreements about whether that condition is necessary or not.
Yeah, if it's by right, then do we?
Why do we have to say?
Yeah, yeah.
It would seem to me that any changes, unless they go beyond, like exceed existing what we've allowed in this permit would be permissible. Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm not, like, this is a new one to me.
Yes, if the board is, you know, comfortable with the conditions as it is, and that's also in line with the much more senior staff. So just wanted to bring it up, but yeah.
Appreciate it. I think I'm comfortable as with as it is, as as we've.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
So is that your motion then, Maureen?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I will second it. Maureen, David?
Okay, by by roll call, David?
Yes, in favor.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. I, you know, I meant to say for the record that I think I already did that in that, you know, we that I I feel that the this satisfies the standard required, and that is the determination that the larger size would not detract from the character of the neighborhood. But I think I already stated it. So maybe we'll just make sure that's in the minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate your keeping us to the actual standards, David. That's good. That's good.
So, so, so you're all set, Erica? And I think we just now, oh, we had some, so we have a little bit more.
Yeah, so Erica just needs to follow up with Nathan about the DPW, right?
Yeah, and also state law, Erica, requires, so once I need to write the written decision so I can get to the Monday since Friday is a holiday. Once I write it and file it, state law requires you to wait for 20 days for an appeal. It's very rare and it's not going to happen most likely, but it's a state law. So after 20 days of the appeal, you can get a certified copy from the city clerk and then file it with the register of deeds. So that'll be your official of special permit registered. So there are a couple more steps, you know, addition to DPW, but I'm happy to work with you on that after, after the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, all set?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The, oh, we had, we had one, one set of minutes, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, and yeah, in the meantime, the applicant's free to go, right, David?
Oh, yes, 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 I'm sorry.
Yes. So yeah, thank you, Erica. We got a couple other things, but you're, we are welcome to leave or stay.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
Thank you.
Nathan, I have a question that it's a little late, but it doesn't really matter, I don't think. Obviously, the downtown business, historic business district doesn't have a say on these awnings. They must only address changes to the facades of buildings in downtown Northampton?
Oh, that's my understanding, but I need to check with that. Yeah, I think because it's a, it's an awning that's sort of a attachment, but not a permanent part of the building. I don't think the Central Business Architecture Committee requirement trigger, but definitely I need to clarify that with Carolyn.
Yeah, because that would apply to the other, well, actually, we didn't approve the other awning because they reduced the size of it. But it occurred to me, does the Central Business Architecture Commission, is is their approval required? I'm assuming not, but I was just wondering. Doesn't really affect us either way, but it affects the, could affect the applicant.
Right, right. That's actually, thank you for bringing it up. That's one detail I need to really work on.
And so we had some minutes.
Yeah, um, yeah, there's minutes from the meeting I was not at, but.
I had one comment on these. Actually, Maureen is usually our eagle eyes catching. Maureen, did you have any comments?
This is the minutes from 10:12?
Correct. Did you have a chance to take a look?
I did look. I did a quick drive through and I didn't see anything.
Okay, thanks. The one thought I had, and tell me if it's not appropriate, is this, I'm not crazy about the sentence, "Bloomberg said that the significance of minutes are greater for ones with risks of appeals." That was supposed to be an editorial comment. I guess there's no great harm in having it.
And I agree. I think we might want to, we might want to.
Actually, I, I, I would say I did notice that and I appreciated it was there. And I always feel like I wish there was opportunity for us to have that type of conversation. But it's really hard to have that kind of conversation, you know, off, you know, out of school. So I appreciated it was there, but is it legitimately like appropriate in the minutes? I don't know. But then if we just remove that, because it's not necessarily part of the minutes, would we also remove the next sentence that was that that's about the next part that's about recordings?
Let me take a look. Well, you're right, the continue, the next couple.
I mean, it's, it's just more of a conversation we had, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Which I think, you know, I'm not uncomfortable with any of that being part of our minutes, honestly, but but.
Well, I'd leave that one up to David. I, I kind of agree with David that it's kind of a, if I had said that and it showed up, I might have, I might be squirming a little bit. So I'd really be happy to take it out. But I get your point, Maureen, and I think it's, yeah, we can have this conversation sometime separately if we put it on the agenda.
Right.
I can just say something like the board reviewed. I can just say something like the board reviewed September twenty eight minutes and thought it was appropriate, something like that. Just take out all that.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I mean, we do have discretion in what our minutes say. They don't have to be, you know, encyclopedic. Um, but, but um yeah, maybe we could do something like that. Um, you know, there was a, you know, there was a discussion of the minutes and the relation of the minutes versus the recordings of the hearings and the minutes were approved. Well, I guess we have it in the next one.
Do we, if we're, if we're not approving today or we're approving with a change, do we really need to justify why we make the change or can we just take it out?
Yeah, I don't think we have to justify why we make the change. That's why we review the minutes.
Right.
I'll just say I appreciated you, you mentioning that, David. I mean, I learned from you all.
Right, thank you. But, but it's, it was really intended to be an editorial aside.
Yes.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry. I think I, I should have had better discretion.
Well, no, I mean, you're.
No, I'm glad you put it in there, Nathan.
You know, and the, the, the underlying principle is minutes should be thorough and complete, and we don't, none of us would disagree with that. And then back in the day, we just to say, we would just say, don't put that in the minutes, but I don't think we're supposed to do that either. So that's what I remember when we used to do, don't put that in the minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, at least other, you know, non-public boards that I've been on.
So why don't I make a motion to approve the minutes without that sentence and the next one?
No, I actually would, I would, I think the next section, the whole recordings uh is so different that I might just keep it in as is, unless either of you feel differently.
Yeah, I think there's no, no harm in le, in just removing that one sentence.
Right. I mean, I think keeping the rest of it, you know, we've seen in just maybe, I'm only thinking of one instance where a um an appellant was saying that they couldn't, that they were looking back at recordings to find some, you know, history of some story. And I think it's helpful for us to have in our records that, you know, the role, the recordings are not the legal document. The minutes are the legal document.
Right, right.
Yeah, I can just take out.
The recordings are not posted by the city, which Nathan was really good to, you know, articulate here.
Right. So I think we can just delete that one sentence.
Yeah, I just, I deleted that one sentence where it says, Bloomberg says so and so. I just deleted that one single sentence. And I mean, you know, it is not, you know, truly pertinent to the matter. So it's more editorial comment like David said. So I think there is a well justified reason to uh remove it. So that one sentence has been removed. Everything else has been kept.
Right. I mean, chit chat happens in meetings and you don't have to write down all the chit chat, if it, especially when it bears no direct relation to, it's had to do with reviewing minutes, not an application that was before us.
Right, exactly. All right, so move to approve the minutes as amended, I, I don't wanna say amended, but has changed.
It's changed with deletion of that sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second, or can we, can we just move to approve baldly and have that taken out? Because otherwise it's kind of flagged and that's kind of weird too.
Uh, I mean, um, about Elizabeth, uh, Silver moved to approve the, approve the mo, uh, approve the minutes with some edits.
Yeah, with the edit that was discussed or something.
Yeah.
Yes, that's okay.
And then second.
Yes.
Okay, by, by roll call, uh, David?
Yes.
Yep. This is, I almost said Bloomberg. So David, yes. Um, yeah, Elizabeth?
Yes.
And um, um, Maureen?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
And one too, that's okay.
Yeah, I, I respond to a lot of names.
And we have a next meeting, I think, December fourteenth. Is that the other?
Yes, yep, that's the next one. There's no, um, there will be no meeting until then. And that's the, that's the um appeal of the uh, building commission decision to demolish River Bank.
Oh, my God.
The, the, the attorney has got the um, the attorney has got the certified copy of the special permit uh some time back. Um, I haven't had any updates about it since then. And I am not aware of any order of conditions, application that has come in. So, um.
There will be when we start getting closer. We'll get stuff in, more stuff, no doubt.
Well, I'm available on December fourteenth.
I am too, that's the man.
I am three, yeah.
Okay, so all three available.
Drove by there the other day. I'm not gonna say anymore, but I think it's worth.
I do occasionally. I have a friend in the neighborhood, so we take a walk down that road. Yeah.
I think it's a good idea to do that.
Yeah, it looks like he did rec, I'm looking in the land records. Well, I guess we shouldn't do that during this year.
Well, no, I think just knowing whether or not the transfer went through is.
That I'm not seeing.
Oh, okay, okay.
Nathan, I will, I will say I really appreciate, well, so much about what you're doing, but also that you um took photographs of this, you know, tonight's um hearing, those awnings, because I always try to go for a site visit. But your photo, sometimes I can't, or I just haven't pulled it off, and those photographs are really helpful. So thank you for that and everything you're doing.
Thank you very much.
I second that.
Thank you.
Um, so I guess just motion to adjourn then, right?
Sure, I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay.
All right, by roll call, David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Good to see you all.